Thank you. Good evening. This is the February 22nd, 2021, meeting of the Gofstown Select Board. This meeting is being conducted remotely via the Microsoft Teams platform. There's public access available via the telephone. There'll be more details on that very shortly. So I want to call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, now there's some specifics about how we're going to conduct the meeting under the right to know law. There's a meeting checklist that we have to go through. As Chair of the Gofstown Select Board, due to the COVID-19 outbreak and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm we are doing several things. A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. The town is utilizing the Microsoft Teams platform for this electronic meeting. Public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following telephone number, (603) 766-5646, and using the participation code 785645, followed by the pound sign. B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. The town previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using the available telephone number with a posted agenda. C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem with telephone access, please call (603) 384-3624 for assistance. And finally, D, adjourning the meeting. This meeting shall be done by roll call vote. So let's start the meeting by taking a roll call of attendance. When I identify each member, please state your name and that you are present, and also whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. My name is Carlos Adams. There is no one in the room with me at the moment. We have next Kelly.
Kelly Boyer, no one in the room with me.
Peter?
Peter Georgantis, no one in the room.
Mark?
Mark Lemay, nobody in the room, just myself.
Thank you. And Chet?
Chet Bowen, no one in the room.
Thank you. So we'll get started the agenda. The first item of business is the minutes, approval of minutes. Let's see.
Make a motion where you approve the public and non-public minutes of 2:08:21.
Second. Thank you. Motion made by Peter, seconded by Mark. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chet?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes 5:00. Let's see, that was for, should identify what meeting that was for. That was for the February 8th, 2021. Those are both public and non-public minutes. Is that the intent of the motion maker and the secondor? Just clarify, please. Just want to clarify, it was minutes from the February 8th, 2021, meeting, we had both public and non-public minutes. The motion was for both, both copies of public and non-public. Is that agreeable to the motion maker and secondor? I think it was.
That's what I said, approve the minutes of 2008:21.
Okay, thank you. Just want to clarify. A little early. Announcements. I don't have any announcements. Are there any other board members who have announcements they'd like to share at this time? All right. Let's see, next on the agenda is public comment. We'll make wait a couple of minutes for public comment. We're a little over for that. It's only 6:05. We've got an appointment right after public comment. Let's see. Chief, can we go down to agenda item number six, which is the formal adoption of the Hazard Mitigation Plan update for 2021?
We can, Mr. Chair. I think I can squeeze this in in the necessary time here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So it's time, we're here for the request of formal adoption from the board on our updated Hazard Mitigation Plan. I'll give you kind of just a real high-level overview, just in case someone is watching and not familiar with the plan. So the latest plan is, was over 170 pages. And some of the highlights were the Gofstown Hazard Mitigation Plan. It was updated, compiled to assist the Town of Gofstown in reducing and mitigating future losses from natural, technological, and human-caused events. So this plan is updated every five years, and it's a pretty arduous task. We had many people involved, and I did want to recognize some of our members. So we had Derek Horn, the Town Administrator, Danielle Basora, Assistant Town Administrator, Police Chief Serino, our DPW Director, Adam Jacobs, myself, Deputy Chief Eno, CFO of the Fire Department. We also had Chairman of the Board, Carlos Adams, Jeff Panar from Police, our Planning Director, Joanne Duffy. The Water Department was involved, IT, and we couldn't have done this without mapping solution. They did a phenomenal job keeping us on task, and there was many meetings and lots of involvement. So through the Hazard Mitigation Plan, I mentioned about the natural hazards. So some of those things we discussed were like wildfires or severe winter weather. And within each category, we identified those risks as either high, low, or medium, and the group prioritizes those. So if there is ever an event, it's kind of a playbook that we can go to as a reference as a starting point to how to mitigate that plan. And also, within the tail end of the plan, there's some action items that many of us have, such as culverts for the future or creating an emergency management webpage. So each one of those action items has been identified, it has a key point of contact, and as we move forward over the next four or five years, we should be going after those action items year after year. And mapping solutions will send out annual reminders of those for us. So if there's any, that's kind of a really high-level overview of what the Hazard Mitigation Plan was. Thank you to everyone who was involved. There was a lot of meetings and a lot of hard work went into it.
Yeah, thanks for that overview, Chief. I want to echo that and thank those who participated as well. There were, I don't know, at least a half a dozen meetings, if not more, and they were two, two hours plus each. There was a whole bunch of material and ground that was covered. But the meeting organizer kept us on track and kept us moving, did a great job, helped guide us through it to get to this point where we're now ready to adopt it. Are there questions from board members for Chief?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that the Town of Gofstown adopt the Hazardous Mitigation Plan Update 2021 Emergency Operation Plan. Therefore, nullifying all previously adopted Hazardous Mitigation Plan for the Town of Gofstown.
Second that.
Okay, I think we probably ought to read the rest of it, if we could, Peter. Further, per resolved by the Select Board.
Further resolved by the Board of Select, but I'm sorry. The plan is hereby adopted while as unofficial plan for the Town of Gofstown. The respective officials identified in the mitigation action items of the plan are hereby directed to pursue implementation of the recommended actions assigned to them. Further revisions and plan maintenance required by 44 CFR 201-6 and FBMA and FEMA are hereby adopted as part of this resolution for five years from the date of this resolution. An annual report on the progress of the plan's actions items will be presented to the Select Board by the Emergency Management Director.
Thank you, Peter.
Got all that in?
That's the, that's all of it. That's the whole motion. And do we have a second, I imagine?
I will second that.
Thank you, Chet. Any questions or discussion from board members on the Emergency Management Plan? Or anything contained in this motion, it's fairly lengthy, but needs to be done to formally adopt it. No, no questions? Good job, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Yep, I'll call a roll, then I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you. Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chet?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5:00. I want to go back up.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I want, on the minutes, I shouldn't have made that motion. I read the minutes, but I wasn't at the meeting itself, so I really shouldn't have made the motion.
Okay, let's, let's just go back and make sure we do this right, and we'll just formally, can someone else make the motion to adopt those minutes of February? I lost it. February?
8th.
8th, February 8th, 20?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to.
Thank you, Kelly.
Non-public.
Thank you. That's for both sets, public and non-public. And a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, now I'll call a roll again. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna skip over Peter.
Bob Staines.
Right. Excuse me. Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chet?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes 4:00, 1 abstention. So I want to go back up to, we got an appointment, well, actually, it's 6:10. It's time for our first public comment opportunity. Derek, do you see anybody?
Yes, we do have, we do have a couple callers on the line. If you wish to speak during public comment, please press star nine on your telephone. Now raise your hand and indicate that you want to make public comments.
Good evening. Who do we have with us this evening?
Hi, this is Kimberly.
Kimberly?
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm watching, I'm watching the meeting online, so there's a lag between you and I, so I'll stop watching and try to listen. So I did have a public comment. I am curious, I am the vice chair of the Planning Board, and I have heard that there has been questions about if we're changing the way the meetings are going to be held, and that there's been discussion among the Select Board about whether we're going to Zoom meetings or not. And I'm curious of the status of that, and wanted to find out where we are in that process and if that changes to take place.
Thanks, Kimberly. We're actually going to take that up later in the meeting under Old Business. Can you stick with us?
Sure. Do I have a chance to comment then, or do you want to hear a comment now?
No, no, you can comment now, that's fine. I just want to put you on notice so you didn't hang up and leave the meeting. But go right ahead.
I am for having Zoom meetings, and I, you know, I'm a professional, and I work on the other side of the table around the state and lots of other towns. And we've been doing Zoom meetings for ten months now, and I really like the way that they work, and I would be all for changing to that platform.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Has anybody, thanks, Kimberly. Is anybody else, Derek? I think there was one other, you said?
Yes, there is one other call. If you could just identify yourself when I unmute your line. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Karen Hughes. I'm also a member of the Planning Board and was calling for the same reason that Kimberly is calling. Do you, I'm assuming you'd like me to comment now?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, you know, I think as elected officials in the town, you know, the Select Board, you know, has a responsibility to make sure that we're keeping our residents safe, especially our town employees. And so I, you know, I've, I've been in that room many evenings, holding the, you know, attending the Planning Board meetings, and, you know, I just don't see the need for meeting in person. You know, there's a wide breadth of technology that's available for us. I'm also an attorney, I'm an education attorney, and I haven't had an in-person hearing since March 19th in court, in March 19th, 2020, and I haven't had an in-person school meeting since March 18th, 2020. You know, I've used Zoom, I've used WebEx, I've used Microsoft Teams, I've used Google Meet. And, you know, I think it's, I think it's really easy to use, like, like Kimberly was saying. I've actually had to introduce evidence, and it's, it's pretty easy to do, sharing the screen, so that way everybody can look at what we're doing online. And I just, I just think it's, it's common sense practice, and we do have a light at the end of the tunnel with the vaccinations, and I just don't think it's worth the risk of putting our staff at risk until we really get out of this, you know, pandemic period in the next, you know, six to eight months. So.
So.
That's my comment.
What's that?
That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. So you're of the same position as Kimberly, that requiring all meetings to be held remotely?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Derek, is anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I got a question.
Sure.
I think we got the two people that, I thought we already had that, we already made that decision that all the town meetings were going to be Ramon.
We did.
Okay, so they're just, I think what I just heard is they're backing up our decision from that meeting that we hold the meetings remotely.
Well, we just wanted to revisit it because there's been some conversations. I don't know where they've been happening, but whether or not it's the right thing to do.
Under what precedence are we going to be revisiting?
Well, the rules of procedure allow any person who was on the prevailing side to bring it back forward again for reconsideration. So there's a process in place to do it, to someone on prevailing side, which would be anybody except for me, could bring it forward again for reconsideration. So that, that's the process that would, would be followed.
So you've opened that, just out of curiosity, you've opened that up under Old Business to be able to do that?
We haven't got to Old Business yet, but.
Is that how, that's, that's what you did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm just curious how the, how it came up again, that a decision we've already made.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's true of any, any decision we make, Peter. If somebody on the prevailing side wants to bring it forward for reconsideration, then certainly that's, the rules of procedure allow that. But we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. That, that'll come up under Old Business, I believe.
All right.
Yep, sure. So, okay, so that was our public comment period. I want to get back to the agenda. We do have an appointment about the AmeriCorps Vista. Who's going to present that, Derek? Kelly, are you going to present that, or is Derek going to present it?
No, actually, Mr. Chair, our AmeriCorps Vista, Connor is going to.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me present to you tonight.
Yeah, welcome.
It's good, it's good to meet everyone virtually. I see a couple familiar faces in here. So for those who don't know, my name is Connor Liva. I'm currently serving as the town's AmeriCorps Vista member. So AmeriCorps Vista is actually a federally funded program, so the federal government will sponsor federal volunteers to go and work with usually nonprofits or municipalities, and some of them even work with the state government, to assisting capacity building. And so basically what that means is we tend to stay more in the back office settings, working to develop organizational capabilities to be used long after we're gone. Instead of doing more direct service, like, you know, working in a food bank or, or things of that nature. So I've been here since August 31st, and my term ends at the very end of August. So this is right around the six-month mark. So what I wanted to do today was to take some time and go over some of the things that I've been working on so far, as well as some of the, the plans that I have for the future, and to kind of get the board's input on what's, what's, what's occurring, what we have planned, and then to make sure that we're on the right track. I know that this position is discussed previously in, in some, some past meetings. I want to make sure that I'm, I'm on the right track and that everything's going according to plan. So the first one that I did was really kind of the basics. It was conducting a needs assessment with several different departments in the town. And special thank you to all the department heads that are here and not here today, who took the time to meet with me, especially the, the Planning and Zoning Board staffs, where I think I spent definitely a couple hours talking with them and picking their brains. I really appreciate the time that. I really appreciate the time that everyone in the town has given me to make sure that I'm on the right track. We did a needs assessment to kind of identify what already existed in Goss Town, what the town was doing really well, what needed work, and then kind of bridging the gap between the current, the current status and the needs, and figuring out what the next steps are, so I met with the library, the Parks and Rec Department, zoning and planning, and I actually used a lot of the historical data as well from my predecessor who was on the fellowship, they did a lot of really good work developing materials for AARP. And we identified a couple of key things, really the three big ones were housing, transportation, and community outreach, which I kind of classified as activities. So using those as the baseline, I kind of used that to guide the rest of them, and I'll touch on most of those topics in the future, because they were pretty big, big issues, that obviously will take a lot of time, so my goal is to try to find a consistent, easy to do, easy to implement solution within the year. And the other thing with this project as well is that I'm also planning to do a kind of a post-mortem, once I'm done, so that where I got to benefit from my predecessor's amazing work, you know, should there be another Vista or fellowship in the future, or even for the town, you know, the boards to use and the department heads, they'll be able to use this kind of roadmap to figure out, okay, well, we've built them, we have this progress that we made over the last year, these are the next steps in order to continue building on those successes, and including tracking mechanisms to make sure that things stay on the right track. The first one, the biggest issue that a lot of people had mentioned was housing. So I worked, I did a lot of research to figure out through AARP and several national think tanks to figure out what sort of housing options are available that would fit within the town of Goss Town. And recently, as I'm sure you're all aware, the state passed the accessory dwelling unit law that allows towns and municipalities to, requires them to be allowed through either exceptions or by right, so I worked with the planning staff as well as the planning board to get included on the upcoming vote, they're actually including a measure that will allow more than one front door, the nice thing about accessory dwelling units is that they increase housing capacity without changing the fundamental character of the town, which is really, really the goal of this, is to attempt to make it easier for homeowners and property owners to look into, to make these more accessible, without fundamentally changing the look and feel of the town. I live in Manchester, and I was a prolific user of the rail trail, and I don't think that, you know, putting in massive housing projects would be a productive use of the town's time, so by bringing up these issues, the zoning board, the planning board was able to really get into some good discussion, and I believe that the chair had, the chair had mentioned that there's potential for discussion in the future, so I think there is good work that's going on there. The next, the next item is actually the one I'm most excited about, it's still in the somewhat early stages, but it's a memorandum of understanding between the town of Goss Town and the Allard Center. Basically, what we're looking to do is do a joint partnership that allows, we've been focusing on the Parks and Rec Department and the library to use their senior center through joint activities, and we're able, we're trying to make it free for town residents. So they're getting a new executive director, and we've reached out to the chief operating officer of the Granite Y system, thank, special thanks to Rick for that one. And basically, the goal is for this is to make sure that there's plenty of space and opportunity for people, specifically seniors in Goss Town, to really get out and enjoy the community as much as possible. One of the big issues that I found from talking with the library is that space, especially during COVID nineteen, was a very limiting factor, and where the Allard Center has some amazing facilities, most residents are either priced out or not able to get access for whatever reason. So by developing this partnership, we're hoping to increase engagement with town residents and really develop a growing partnership between this really big organization that the town has. And the partnership we're developing right now is designed to be like a base layer, so that it can be built off of in the future, what we really want to do is make it so that we start slow and try a couple of trial, the MOU is designed to operate for one year, and right now we've worked it out with them, where we don't necessarily want to sign it until we know the pandemic restrictions are kind of winding down, and people feel safe getting outside. But it's designed, it's finally built off of, so it starts small, but talking from, with both the Allard Center and the town departments that will be affected by this, they all seem really excited, and they definitely have big plans, so I think that this could be something to really grow in the future. The next one, which is also still in the earlier stages, is the Age and Place voluntary certification, and basically, this is actually something that's recommended by AARP, and they have a whole host of requirements for houses to be considered safe for seniors, and basically what this means is that it would be a certification that could be attached to someone's house. Someone will go in and inspect it and make sure that they have, they meet certain requirements like easy-to-access counters, no loose wires. The Age and Place certification is actually specific to Goss Town, it's designed to be, it's designed for existing and potential builds, that way we're not limiting, since Goss Town already has a very solid house base, we don't want to make it so that we have to rebuild your house in order to be certified, so it's mostly just some some nice housekeeping items, making sure that, you know, living rooms are clear of anything that might make someone fall, that it reduces fire risk. The real two perks of this program, it's designed to make it easier for seniors to identify safe places to live in town, so they might not have to sit, they might not have to shift through as many, as many paperwork and do quite as much research. Another one that I think will really make a difference as well is that the real fundamental goal is to try to reduce the number of falls that the fire department has to respond to. There's some really easy fixes in here that will, you know, like tripping over cords, tripping over carpets, and the goal of this is to take some of the pressure off of the town emergency responders, so that we can prevent those falls from ever happening, and thus, you know, kind of reduce the burden on the emergency services. The last one is streamlined resource access, so this is actually a a brand-new design for the town webpage specifically for senior citizens, the town already has a number of fantastic resources for residents to use in terms of, you know, things with the tax code, housing assistance, just general information, and we already do a lot of activities for seniors to partake in. But sometimes it can be difficult, it was actually difficult for me when I first started to kind of navigate through the town website and figure out what I needed versus what I didn't. So just doing an updated one, ideally creating a consolidated calendar between most of the, all the town departments, so that you can, it's kind of a one-stop shop for specific events that are going on in town, just making it really easier for people who might not be as well-versed with going on the internet, or might not have as much access, to really make it easy for them to get the resources that they need, and be able to get out into the community as much as possible. So that is pretty much it in terms of past and future plans, I'd love to get feedback from the board about any any potential areas that I might be missing, or feedback on what I just said.
Well, thanks for that overview and presentation, Connor, it's very, very helpful, and it sounds like you've done a lot of good work on behalf of the community, thank you very much for that, and thank you for the presentation tonight. Can I ask you one question to get things started, relative to the senior age in place, it sounds like a lot of things you talked about were like housekeeping items, does it include any sort of minor structural things? What comes to mind are grab rails in bathrooms, railings on entry steps, those sorts of things.
Yeah, so there are some things like that in there, I tried to limit it as much as possible because I didn't want it, I didn't want anyone to have to basically reconstruct their whole house, like some of the some of the requirements the AARP listed were, you know, specific width for doorways, so that might be something that's really useful for a new build, but for an older, like a historical house, probably doesn't have a doorway that can fit a wheelchair, and it wouldn't be necessarily fair to them to miss out on that because they live in a historic building. But there are things like that that include hand railings, you know, grab bars, even using specific kinds of carpeting in the bathroom or things like that. I really wanted to focus and make sure that it was easy to access for everyone while still addressing those two core issues.
And so to follow up on that, if I can, is there funding sources available for those sorts of things, because even the grab bars in bathrooms, I mean, to purchase them and install them, there's some costs associated there, is there assistance with funding for those types of things?
So there, yes and no, there are a couple, right now, from my understanding, the town doesn't offer any financial assistance for that, that could be something to look at in the future, should the board be willing to entertain that, but there are a lot of nonprofit options, as well as a couple of smaller loans that can be taken out. There's, unfortunately, off the top of my head, I don't quite remember them, because it's been a couple of months since I've looked at it, but there are specific loans that are usually smaller that can be used for like small construction projects, and that would be something that would likely fall under that category, and there, I know there are a couple banks in town that actually offer those loans specifically. They're not necessarily designed like tailored for senior citizens, but it would be good for anyone to have access to those. And then the other option is, there are some places like Habitat for Humanity that offer occasional small grants to to municipalities or locals in the towns that they serve, and the Goss Town is served by the Habitat for Humanity in Manchester, so residents could take advantage of that as well.
That's great info, thanks, other members of the board have questions for Connor?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Let's go Peter first, and then the next one.
You talked about the AARP Agent, Agent Place, is that the program where town of Goss Town was like the second one selected in the state?
Yeah, so my predecessor actually worked really hard to make sure the town got cert, so Goss Town is a certified Age and Place community, and there are a number of different factors that go into being a specific Age and Place community. What I was referencing to specifically was some of their Age and Place recommendations for housing to make it safer and easier to access for seniors, but there are a whole host of other things that go into that, that Goss Town currently meets, but that I've specifically focused on this aging in place one.
So.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to say, this was something we adopted, I don't know, like four years ago, three, four years ago, and I wanted to make sure.
It was twenty eighteen.
It was twenty eighteen?
Yep.
So I just wanted to make sure it was something, we made the right decision, it sounds from what I understand, and also, the same thing goes as far as the decision we made with a Vista person, it sounds like with the work that you've done, that we also made a decent decision there, would you agree?
I feel like I'm a little biased as the Vista, but.
I would expect you to be.
Yeah, but no, I think that there is some real good work that can be done through the Vista program, and, you know, the fellowship in twenty eighteen was also, I mean, they did some really good work, getting, getting, they did a lot of the heavy work to get certified for the whole town, and I think I view really this position as building off that. You know, there's a lot of work to be done in Goss Town to help seniors, I mean, it's a relatively large demographic, and they tend to have some of the higher needs, and meeting some of, meeting some of those needs in a low-cost way will eventually help you know, reduce the burden across the board. And I think that's, you know, with most of these things, this design, it's small incremental change, but I think that's really where the most difference ends up coming from overall.
Thank you.
Thank you. It would help, when we run these meetings, folks, down at the bottom of the screen, there's a tool tray with a number of different functions, one of them is raise your hand. I think it would help with these meetings to keep them more organized and efficient, if you want to ask a question, raise your hand, then I can identify and we can move along with it. I see Chet, raise a check, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Connor, first of all, thanks for all of your efforts here, I want to echo what Peter and the chair had already said about that. The, the Age and Place obviously is the one where you're getting many questions, so mine, in recognizing that this has mutual benefit to seniors, residents, and then first responders and all of that, this certification, is it meant to be annual, or is it a one-time certification? I guess that's my question, is how, how often does it need to be recertified, if at all?
That's a, that's a great question, so, and like, it's still, it's still in the early phase, and I'm expecting this item specifically to come to the board in the future. So hopefully, I love getting the questions about it now, so I can address them before it comes to the board in a more formal capacity. Right now, it doesn't have any specific limit, it's usually a one-and-done, I could also foresee it being if ownership changes hands, it could be recertified, or if someone, you know, submits something for a variance or to the planning board that specifically relates to one of those key areas, it could be recertified, but right now is, the way it is written, it's just a one-and-done.
Okay. Chet, you still have the floor, did you want to have a follow-up, or?
The only thing, I would say, I'm not, I haven't been part of this process, just a thought out there would be, as part of the recertification, if there's any adjustments at all, I would assume there would be something in, like almost a flag in place, if there are responses to the home that's already certified, that maybe there could be some additional suggestions made in those cases, I think that would happen organically anyway, so that's, that was all I had to say about it, thank you.
Thanks, Chet, Kelly, I see your hand, go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, hi Connor, it's nice to see you again, and I just want to say thank you for all of this amazing work that you've been doing, it's really great that we're able to dedicate some really good brain power to working on this, so thank you again, echoing our entire board, I think we're all pretty excited about this, my question in particular was about the memorandum of understanding with the Allard Y, do you know, is there, we also have the bus program, which I know you know about, would that kind of work in conjunction with that memorandum of understanding as well?
Yes, that's a great question, and it's actually come up a lot in my discussions with the Allard Center and the town, because as we all know, the Y has the bus that they use, we have the MTA agreement, one of the things that we discussed about was how to get more residents into these events that we do, because obviously if we host an event with the Y, we want to make sure we get as many as possible, especially in some of those areas that both Parks, Library, and the Allard Center have had hard time reachings, especially in like Pinnardville. So one of the things we talked about doing was really utilizing that as a resource, and, you know, when they do marketing, actually publishing that specifically, as, you know, we can get a ride here, and maybe schedule like a pickup with the MTA. Like I said, it's still in the early phases, but that's definitely a part of the conversation. I can definitely foresee them becoming a much larger force in that discussion in the future, there are also a couple of other options we've talked about as well, there's a nonprofit that's run out of Manchester that will, if you give them twenty-four hour notice, they will give you, they'll give seniors a ride wherever they need to go, if it's a doctor's appointment to the grocery store, to the senior center, so that was, looked at as another potential option. Or even teaming up with the Allard Center, if we have, if we can get people to sign up specifically for a big event, utilizing their bus to, to go through and pick people up at, you know, set locations, or some of the key areas that we're looking to break into. But it's really all, at this point, just words, so we're working with them to figure out what would be the best way.
Yeah, that's great, thank you, I am hopeful that we can utilize that service more in the future, so it's good to hear. My second question is, the, you had mentioned that, you know, within a year, you'd like to be able to roll out some of this stuff, do you kind of have an idea of, you know, when we might be able to see some of this stuff kind of in the final stages, or what, you know, what your progress is looking like?
Yeah, absolutely, so the, the same needs assessment, I've met with the town departments, and really, that was kind of the framework for the rest of it. I will, I would be happy to present my roadmap for the future, once my term nears, nears a close. The zoning ordinance amendments are actually, the addition of the front door is actually going to the town for a vote, which I'm very excited about. The MOU is a work in progress, right now, we're actually looking to meet with the new executive director of the Allard Center. We just reached out to the COO, and she said that she would be our best contact, and they're brand new, so I don't have a specific timeline for that one yet, but I do know that my goal is to get at least the MOU in a position where it might not be able to be signed while, before I leave my Vista role, just because of the virus and the unknowns with that, but that it will be in a position where as soon as, you know, everyone feels comfortable at the towns, at the town level and the Allard Center level, where they could sign it without needing to amend anything.
Yeah, that's great, thank you, you're getting a whole, whole lot of stuff done, so I'm looking forward to hearing from you again.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we'll have that document in a place, in a place where it can be signed without amendments, ideally by the very beginning of the summer.
Great, thank you.
Kelly, you still have the floor, if you have any other questions or comments?
I'm all set, Mr. Chair, thanks.
Okay, Peter, I see your hand up again, go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, Connor, who are you, who are you working with, you mentioned everybody, all the departments pretty much in the town. Yeah, Connor, who are, who are you working with? You mentioned everybody, all the departments pretty much in the town. Is there one specific person that kind of heads up the program with you that you're working with? Derek, Joanne, and Economic Development? Or is there one particular person that you're kind of laying everything on to so they know what's going on?
Yep, yeah. I meet with Derek every, every two weeks. We have usually a half an hour sit down and, and he helps keep me on the right track and keeps me out of trouble. And he's been a fantastic resource this entire time.
Okay. I just want to make sure somebody's there to know what's going on.
Don't worry. I, 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 I have the same sentiment.
So Connor, I think I heard you say, you can correct me if I got it wrong, that at the end of your term, there'll be a debriefing with a report out of what you've accomplished and where we're at. Something that we'll have in our hands that we can look at.
That's correct. Yeah, my, my predecessor left a fantastic, it might not be as long because I'm not as well, as well written as she is. Or she was, she, she left probably a 30-page document that listed specific items that the town was working on, items that the town could accomplish, the, the areas of need. And it was a little bit broad, so I'm hoping to make mine a little bit more specific with specific, you know, action items that can be undertaken within a set timeframe. But I also want to leave it a little bit, a little bit on the broad side so that the boards and the, the town has maneuverability as we see what the world looks like as we come out of the pandemic and as, and as the town changes over time.
Thank you, Connor. I, I don't see any other hands up. Are there anybody else who wants to comment or ask questions of Connor? If not, I want to thank you, Connor. It's some great work. Really appreciate it. Done a lot of good for the community. Looking forward to build upon what you've got so far. Seeing you out to the end of your term and what the final product ultimately looks like. Thank you very much for all your efforts. Great work.
Thanks, everyone, for the time. I appreciate it.
So there's no action required from the select board. That's just a presentation. Whoops, I lost my other screen. Okay, so I'm going to move down the agenda. We already heard from Chief Allard. That was on the emergency management plan. That was the resolution and all the backup material dated, the signatures that need to be need, we need from each of the select board members. Is that, that's ready to be signed, I assume? Derek or Daniel?
Yes, those are in your signature folders at Town Hall.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, where does that bring us to? Oh, brings us down to Adam. He's going to bring us up to date with the construction season and DPW hours. Good evening, Adam. How are you?
Hey, folks. I'm pretty good. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Great. So I got a couple of items tonight. The first one is our annual construction season hours memo. As you know, we transition typically in the summer from a five, eight-hour workdays to four, 10-hour workdays. This helps us both to limit the amount of mobilization and demobilization each day. So that adds up, you know, when you do it five days a week. Plan, we can, can be a little bit more productive with longer workdays during the season, take, take advantage of the longer days in the summer and, and spend less time getting everything to and fro the job site. So with the board's permission, again, this year, we'd like to continue the same practice, starting at the end of March. That leaves us enough time to give the crew the required 30-day notice to, to do a wholesale shift in their work hours. And then typically we carry that right through Columbus Day weekend at the end of the season.
Yeah, and we've been doing that. How many years have we been doing this? Quite a few. It's been pretty successful, quite in my experience.
Probably 10 plus anyway, I would imagine. Carl probably started it. So one, one change I should note, this year at least going into the season, we had a hard time last year with summer help and also with the vac on. So because of that, the help, it trickles down into our vac on operation. And when we don't either have the people to run that or when the machine itself is out of service, which we also dealt with last year, but primarily for the labor reason, it, it sort of has these trickle-down effects. So I'd like to, this year, instead of having a vac on, the cemetery crews plan to be on a Monday through Thursday schedule. I'd like to move them to align with the rest of the crew Tuesday through Friday and leave admin, engineering, and then, and then some fleet maintenance staff for, for Mondays. So we're still get coverage throughout the week. And then solid waste, of course, on Saturdays, but still get coverage throughout the week, but like to align the whole, you know, the, the road crews anyway, Tuesday through Fridays.
Then I see the memo has spaces at the bottom for each of the DPW employees to sign it, saying they've read it, they understand it, they agree to abide by it. And they'll all be required to sign that and kept on file.
Right.
Great. Questions for Adam from board members?
I got my hand up.
I missed a hand? Oh, yeah, there is Peter. Go ahead.
Is this an extension? It's just a longer period of time? Is that what it is?
This is the same, last couple of years anyway, we've done the same period. So right, basically April, you know, it just kind of depends where the end of the month of March falls, but typically it's April through Columbus Day.
And have we been, Adam, we have been caught having to wait these seasons, snowstorm, where we got a lot of overtime because there's a four-day work week versus a five?
Forever is a long time, but I can't recall getting caught, you know, in that situation on a, on a Monday snowstorm. Early, certainly could happen. We had an April Fool's Day storm a couple of years ago. Pretty fairly rare anyway, you know, so I, I hope it wouldn't happen sometimes on those, when it happens on a holiday week or, you know, a big call-in on a Sunday or something. Some, some of the crew opts not to continue working throughout the end of the week. So if it were to happen there at the beginning, I have a feeling a good portion of the crew would probably just beg for Friday off instead, instead of working through the rest of the work week.
Mark, I saw your hand go up, but it seemed to have come down. Do you still?
I guess I'm done, Carlos?
Oh, I don't know. I don't see your hand anymore.
It's still up. Well, it was. It's down. It came down, but.
Oh, Peter, yeah, you're way down the bottom. Okay.
Peter, were you all done?
No, I just, he brought up the vac on and we had discussed that at some meetings about the continuing that, not continuing. Have you made, come up with anything on that yet?
I have not. Certainly for this year, plan will be just to continue as normal. It sounds like the sewer commissioners might be doing kind of a hybrid model, but I certainly for stormwater, we, we definitely need to, to hit it pretty hard this year. So either you hear about it next, I would imagine during the run-up to CIP, but, but then certainly built into next year's budget if we make any changes operationally.
That run-up to CIP is only in a couple of, three, couple, three months, so that's why.
Coming soon. It's not, it's, I think the year after next, CIP, I don't have it right in front of me, but the vac on is coming, coming due soon. So we, we do have to make some decisions pretty quick.
All right, thank you.
Carlos?
You all set, Peter? Peter, you all set?
Yes, sir. I took my hand down.
I see what happens when I roll over your name, it disappears. Okay, my, my bad. Okay, go ahead, Mark.
As far as the vac on, my question deals with the vac on as well, Adam. Have we reached a point in the DPW division to have someone assigned to the vac on full-time? Like, like the, the drivers are for the trucks and so on and so forth, because I hear that vac on truck out and about, running around more than it has been in the past. And rather than try to plan a project and lose the, the manpower on the vac on, do you think it would help us or hinder us to try to put a, a permanent crew to that vac on?
We typically, during the construction season anyway, we typically do assign two folks to that, and that's their primary task. We, we look for volunteers first, and if there's no volunteers, we get some voluntolds. But there is a little bit of extra pay for operating the vac on as a premium incentive to try to entice people into that because some of it, as you can imagine, it's a little nasty. But normally we do try to assign two people to that for the year, and then they can kind of be in charge of the maintenance of it and, you know, some accountability on both ends, ownership of the equipment. The, I, I would for the, you know, the remainder of the year, you know, we, we try to winterize that. So it's off-season, you know, it's offline for the most part until we get an emergency call-in. But you can't, you can't leave it outside if it's got, you know, any water in the hoses or line.
Yep.
In the winter. So it does kind of take up some garage space when it's, when it's not winterized. But then in the, in the season, it's nice to be able to flex that crew off if we have to, you know, you know, Fourth of July weekend or whatever, we ask them vacations that everybody tries to take the same, same time period off and the crew starts to look a little thin. So unfortunately, it's kind of a luxury, Adam, to be able to flex back into the fleet if we have to. But typically, the goal is that we've got enough people on staff that, that, that's out more often than not, and it's got the same two guys on it every time.
Okay, thank you very much.
All set, Mark?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Peter, I see you got another question, Peter?
No, I just want, if nobody has got any question, I wanted to make a motion.
Well, your hand's up. Okay, so you're all set?
Yeah, I'm all set. I just want to make a motion.
Okay, go right ahead, Peter.
Make the motion. We approve the proposed 2021 construction season schedule.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion made by Peter, seconded by Mark. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chat?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 500.
Thank you.
Adam, did you get the tire bid results I see next on the agenda, Adam?
Two, yes, sir. In, in your bid tabs, you'll, I'm sorry, in the package, you'll see the bid tabs. We had three timely bidders, Mr. Gee's Tire, Sullivan Tire, and Maynard and Lesier. And I highlighted the low bid for each of the actual tires that were, that were on the bid spec. And as you can see, it's sort of well distributed. We felt that would be the best, the mechanic foreman Zeb and I felt that it'd be the best interest of the town to actually issue or award, I should say, to each of the three vendors. So if, if, let's see, you know, Maynard and Lesier was the low bidder out there on Wrangler SRA is their number two. For those items, we would, we would go to them or Mr. Gee's if they match. But we wouldn't, we'd be able to get the best of both worlds. And the bidders know that going in that we may issue, you know, a split, a split award. So like to keep, keep all our options on the table and keep those companies in our back pockets. If there's a run on tires somewhere, it's nice to be able to get them from a backup source, but ideally we can issue out to whoever's got the best price.
Let's see, Kelly, I see your hand up.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Adam, I just had some logistical questions about awarding the bid to all three. So how would that work if someone's willing to go lower or match a price? You know, how do we determine then who gets that specific job? And how do we ensure that we're continuously going for the lowest price?
So my intention, the tricky thing with tires is that for each given purchase, it usually doesn't trigger PO level quantities. So they're, it's really, we put it out to bid mainly because over the course of a year, we, we really spend a fair amount of money. But each individual purchase typically is under that PO threshold. So we don't normally, you know, do the quote thing or whatever, you know, once we've gone out to bid. But it, it really falls upon the mechanic foreman when he orders, he's got this, you know, or what have it printed out. We've done this with the last process. Just prints it out right on the wall. And then when he knows he needs a certain sized tire, he looks it up and whoever's got the highlighted field, he calls him up. And there you go. I suppose finance, you know, when they see the invoices and they go to get paid out, if they wanted to make sure that that was the, the low bid vendor, then but that's kind of how it, how rubber meets the road. Because it's smaller purchases, we typically order and then we just pay the invoice when they come in.
Okay, so the intention is that we would just go for the lowest on that specific tire size?
Yep. And it, it probably wouldn't make too many friends in the, in the field if we allowed them to sort of now, you know, nip at each other here and say, oh, I saw the bid. Now I can offer you $10 less for that particular tire. You know, that kind of thing. It's, we would treat it like we would for, for a bid. If, if, if the board awards tonight, you know, those are the prices that we would ask them to hold and, and that's what we would honor too on our end.
Great. Thank you.
Peter, do you have a follow-up?
I just, as one who has participated in both sides of this now, I just wanted to give a little bit of information that when you, the, the state bid pricing on tires and it's done by a government, each tire company, Goodyear, Bridgestone, Firestone, Michelin, they all have their own state bid pricing, and that's what these people bid at. So if somebody, we need to make sure we have the latitude of some, these manufacturers are just like everybody else. I mean, you know, sometimes there's backorder situations and we need to have the opportunity to say, okay, that tire's on backorder. We need to go to our second supplier with maybe, I mean, unless you're bidding a Firestone and they're not available, so we need to go to a Bridgestone. Maybe because it's more money, but there are backorder situations with everything we do these days. So I think this is a prudent decision now we have these multiple suppliers. We go to the, that we go to the, to the lowest bid as long as that product's available. We can't let a truck sit because we don't have, that product's not available. So under that guise, I, I would agree with Adam's plan to go with the multiple bidders.
Yeah, it seems like a good way to give us the most flexibility to take advantage of the market fluctuations. Seems to me it would work well on the other side as well as, you know, these tire suppliers know what we're looking for. If they come across just a size that we need, they call us up and say, hey, listen, by the way, I got an opportunity to grab two dozen of these things or whatever at, at a favorable price and give us flexibility on that end, I would think as well.
It doesn't really work that way, Adam, I mean, Carlos, because those prices that you get from the state bid, being a tired, in the tire business for so many years, are actually less of money than what that dealer is paying for the tire. And that's, they're subsidized by the manufacturer. So that's how that tire business works. But like I said, I do agree. I don't know if anybody's got any questions, but if they don't, I'll make a motion that we approve Adam's tire bid.
No, unless any other board members have questions, I'm, I'm ready to entertain a motion. Anybody else?
I'll second Peter's bid.
Okay, Peter's bid. Okay, Peter has made the motion and Mark has seconded it to go with Adam's procedure as he set forth with us. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll call the roll. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chat?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes 500.
Thank you all.
Back to the agenda here. Where are we?
Do you have one more item unless you want me to roll?
Oh, you do. Yep, there it is. Engineering technicians.
We do. A couple of months back, maybe a month and a half ago, we, we spoke about the plan going forward with the retirement of one of our engineering technicians. The, the goal was to shift some duties that we didn't really have in-house expertise as we look to fill that, backfill that position, shift those into the other employees working with the sewer commissioners. So his job becomes more sewer-heavy and less DPW-heavy. And then more of the engineering technician that we hired, more of that time could, could be spent with DPW and engineering tasks. So these job descriptions that Derek has got in the packet for you show a markup version of the job descriptions with the basically reflecting the, for the first one, which is the engineering technician, reflects taking out most of the primary sewer commission duty there and kind of turning that more into an assist role on some of those. Mainly our, our goal going forward, the engineering technician would be that they would help with some of the reporting requirements, but less of the actual operation and maintenance and dealing with the sewer commissioners themselves or applicants, that kind of thing. That would, that would now fall more heavily on the utility supervisor, which is the next job description. And you'll see on his, we've taken some of the, our, our initial goal with this employee was to spend some time with the drainage crew and doing drainage maintenance and then sewer maintenance and a kind of 50/50. But we found that he's really being kind of pulled in two directions during the construction season anyway. So it's really hard to peel him off with a sewer contractor who might be doing improvement work and then put, ask him to also manage a crew in DPW. So figured to give him more of a, the sewer flow, take, take on some of the other tasks that were being done by the engineering technician for the fats, oils, and grease program, the reporting for the Manchester Water Treatment Plant, that the, the DES quarterly reports that they need, as well as the industrial treatment program. And then kind of take on a bigger role with the applicants and street opening permits and that kind of thing. So both those job descriptions kind of reflect that shift of duties over from the engineering technician into the utility. So both those job descriptions kind of reflect that shift of duties over from the engineering technician into the utility supervisor. And then the sewer commissioners have a plan in place with their consultant to try to get the next few years worth of design of their system. They have a six or seven years left of expansion on the system and then a replacement. And then once that work is done, really, they're onto a maintenance and slip lining scheme. So they hope to use a consultant here to get the next couple of years worth of design and then hopefully it's a lighter load for them. They they have seen these after we had talked, you know, just in concept of what it would look like. The sewer commissioners have seen and voted on this change to change their, the amount that they would reimburse the town to go from two fifty fifty employees to a ninety ten and a ten ninety.
Questions for Adam? Don't see any. Adam, what else you got?
That's that's it for the the job descriptions. If I, we do need a vote to, if you do approve to to officially change those for the employees. But I do have some department head updates. I don't know if you want to take those now or take them.
Well, let's just wrap this one up first, Adam. Any questions for Adams on these, the modification of these employee positions and job descriptions? Anybody on the board?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Peter.
I'll second.
As presented, I assume?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Second from Kelly. Thank you, Kelly. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chuck?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes five zero zero.
Thank you all.
And so while you're there, Adam, you want to do your department update for us just so you can cut you loose?
Sure, I can finish my bag of potato chips here. Let's see. Okay, so just a couple of things. I got a, got a lot of stuff tonight. So just an update with overtime budget and salt budget. I took a look as of this morning. We are through about twenty seven percent of our overtime budget, so we're in good shape there. This week's payroll didn't necessarily help some some long hours, unfortunately, on Friday with that nuisance storm that dragged on through the workday. But salt budget is a little higher, but still in good shape. But we're through about forty five percent of the salt budget for the year, sixty seven thousand out of one hundred and forty eight. That does not include, I think, ten loads that were delivered last week. So it'd be a little bit higher, closer to fifty percent, but that's in pretty good shape. We tend to front load, as you may recall from budget season, eighty to ninety percent of our budget is spent usually in the spring or at the tail end of winter into spring. So we kind of ride through the whole year at that eighty to ninety percent level and then just use the rest for the first few storms before the calendar year turns over. So I think we're in good shape as long as we don't have a killer March and then hopefully that April storm we mentioned earlier doesn't happen this year. Out of commission equipment, we've got a couple of things. We've got a F five fifty. Or do we want to talk about this at the end to Derek? I know we didn't have anything on the action matrix, so.
No, I think now would now be appropriate.
Okay, sorry. So we've got a plow frame that's cracked on a five fifty, three thirty two, that's actually a waiting replacement, but we still don't have the new truck from from the the dealer. So unfortunately, we've got to lint that thing along. It's been welded once, so hopefully we can get it welded up a second time and that might last a few more storms. Our backup solid waste trailer engine has some engine codes that they haven't had a chance to troubleshoot yet, so that's offline until we can get those sorted out. But it's the backup truck. But then the big one, truck three twenty one, it's a six wheel. It's actually up for replacement here in a couple of years. It's on C I P, but not until twenty twenty four. It's a two thousand nine International six wheel. We had some blown head gasket to cut to the chase and some cylinder work that had to be done. But it was really a chance that, or a situation where the engine's open to find out what the problem is. And once they're into it, it's either, you know, you button it back up and park it somewhere if you can't really afford to do or do the work. So we opted for an in chassis rebuild and a new head gasket and a new cylinder liner. So let's hope it gets us through the next couple of years, but a pretty, pretty hefty bill is just over eighteen thousand dollars at Liberty International. So hopefully, that's the big one for the year and and it'll be quiet from here on out. But that's it for equipment out of service. Other stuff, we've got the fuel tank project that still is inching along. We we have moved over diesel has been drained down the diesel tank, so we're moving it over to the wax cards and the D O T for fueling of diesel. As of last week, the gas tank, gas storage tank still has a thousand gallons roughly as of today. Really, that's only P D and DPW, the primary users of unleaded. So it's going to be another week or so before the unleaded tank is empty. And as soon as that happens, the consultants can get into the tanks and inspect them. We have to have that roof pulled off so they can get into the tops of the tanks. And hopefully, it's all good news once they get on the insides and they tell us we're we're good to last another ten years until the next inspection, so we can get the roof back on. They've done some piping, safety work and some alarm work in preparation to be ready to make it a quick, when the when the pumps are down, it's a real quick process. But just have to get them empty because that's a lot of, you know, gas to move around. So about another week or so, hopefully, weather permitting, we'll be able to get that off and get that project done. And then the only other thing, we've got some prep work for the road plan. So as soon as the budget's approved, we'll come in with my annual list for the for the twenty twenty one road plan. But in preparation for that, we take a couple of those that need some, that maybe are off the main drag and can allow us to do some winter work. And we know they're in rough shapes, so they'll be included in our plans, even if we're in a default situation. But Holly Hawk and Big James are the two that have had some ledge hammering, some ditch line work and a little bit of drainage ahead of time. So those will be ready. So not to let the cat out of the bag, but at least those two roads are on the twenty twenty one road plan. But as as you know, the Warren Ave neighborhood is definitely on there either way for the summer. And then Upton and Glenwood, a couple of years ago, they had a citizens petition that came in for that neighborhood. So that's moved up to the top. And then the only other one that is a guarantee for the summer right now is Sari Drive. That's the, had lapsed into class six status, the board took a vote last year. I'm sorry, took a vote at the end of twenty nineteen to upgrade that back to a class five. So we've started maintaining that, but it definitely does need that overlay that it never received when it was built. So we've got that in our plans as well. So a little sneak peek at the at the road plan for the summer, but as soon as the budget passes, I'll come in for the rest of it. Thank, that's all I had for you this week.
Anything for Adam? Thank you, Adam. Derek, since we already started down the road of department head updates, let me roll through the rest of those and we'll come back to you for your administrative report. Let's see, I want to go to Chief Allard. Chief Allard, do you have a department report for fire department and emergency response?
Yep, I just have a couple of quick things. So I'm not sure if it, as we always report on the COVID numbers and because we always have changing information. Happy to report tonight, the numbers in town seem to be going in the right direction. It's been quite some time since we've been below number of fifty cases in town. That goes to everyone's effort in town to work on the social distancing and mask wearing. And of course, now the vaccine being rolled out throughout the state. All of our members continue to be healthy. We have no one in quarantine at this time. A couple of us last week did participate in a vaccine clinic with Manchester Public Health. And what we're trying to do is preemptively become qualified, even though we're all, a lot, many of us are paramedics. We still have to go through Manchester Public Health's training to give the vaccines. So we did that last week. And we're hoping to, at some point in time, when the state has enough vaccines, is possibly to bring a pod, which is a point of distribution into Gothstown, to help those residents who can't travel to one of the state sites that are out there now. I have received a few calls from some residents that are struggling to register in the VAM's website. And I just want to publicly say, if people are having a difficult time with the VAM's website, they can always contact two one one and they will try to assist you. Some people don't have internet access for that registration, but they are there to help you if needed. That's it.
Thanks, Chief. I can tell you, my personal experience, Chief, was not good with VAM, so I went to vaccines dot N H dot gov and went through that process that way. It seemed to work fine. Got an appointment really quick. Thanks. Any questions for Chief? Thanks, Chief. Let's see, I see Chief Sereno. Good evening.
Thank you. We also had a few issues with the
Can't hear you, Chief.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, can you hear me now?
Let's try it again. We also had a few issues. A couple of our employees had a few issues with VAM as well, but it seems to be resolving itself. But we are on the right path to success here at the P D. Almost half of us have our second dose, so that's that's going really well for us. Everybody's healthy. We don't have anybody quarantined, which is really good. The other thing I wanted to bring everybody's up to speed on, we had talked back in December about our radio system. Happy to report that that is up and running on both sides, fire and police down in the the Tarrel Hill area. So we are, well, we're good for now, you know, so we're doing really well. And other than that, we're just looking forward to the March vote so we can start our projects here at the P D if it all goes well.
Still holding it together with baling wire and duct tape?
Added a couple of Band-Aids and a little bit of Gorilla Glue. We should be good.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate that. Any questions for for Chief Sereno? Okay, thanks. I'm looking at the attendees list. I don't see Rick Wilhelmie. Rick, are you there? I just don't see your name on the list.
No, Rick is not here this evening.
Let's see. What else we got here? I don't see Diane Library on the list. Kelly, do you have anything about library?
You have a printed report in your packet.
For the library?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't have the pack in front of me. I got too many, too many devices open here. So we've got that report. Kelly, do you have anything you want to add relative to the library?
Yeah, let me, hold on. Sorry, I was trying to find it too. It's a lot of pages today.
It was tab nine.
Thank you. I just wanted to pull this up because this is in regards to the new browsing hours currently in the library, which are on Monday from nine AM to two PM, Tuesday and Wednesday from five to eight PM and Saturday, nine to one PM. The library is not fully reopened, but they are still doing all kinds of programs and services like parking lot pickups for materials, book bundles, foyer browsing, the take and make crafts for all ages. You can still make an appointment to use the computer, family browsing in the children's library, online storytime, book discussion groups, writers groups, and other programming. And there's just a ton of stuff that they're doing. So if you want to take a look at what the library is offering, you can go to the website, W W W dot Gothstownlibrary dot com. And that's it. Doing lots of work over there, trying to keep people connected with the library, so.
Yeah, they're doing a great job. Thank you, appreciate it.
Hey, Collis?
Yes, Mark?
I got Rick Wilhelmie's report from our meeting we had this week, if you want me to read it now or?
Sure, just the
Yeah.
The highlights, yeah.
So basically, the discussion of the meeting was the pool, one of the pools. This is the Roy Park Pool where it's out of water. There's a drain issue with it. The the pool itself is bone dry. So they have to come up with a plan for that to figure out what's going on. The department long term goals for review, they they basically put six or seven of them in place. The number one is the Goth Town Sports Complex. Number two is Rails to Trail. Number three is access to natural resources, upgrade existing parks, special events and programs. The sports programs for the schools is starting to become active again. The games are going on. Everything is working. Everything is going good. Just a quick overview, I'm looking here, they upgrade the existing parks. They feel that the existing parks are, they need some, they need some tender loving care to get them back up to where they belong. They talked about the boat ramp at Glen Lake to try to get that back up and running as well. There are several things on the docket to try to work on to get better. And that's pretty much it. That's 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 the amount of of stuff that he had in his meeting.
Okay, thanks for the report, Mark. And also thanks for covering that for me. I'm fairly short notice. I appreciate it.
No problems.
Any questions for Mark?
Got my hand up.
Oh, there it is. It is. Yep. Go ahead, Peter.
That boat ramp at Glen Lake, is that ours or is that the state's?
That's ours, but it was constructed with state funding.
All right, I wasn't sure how that, I know the state did it, but I didn't know that we owned it after they did it.
Yeah, no, Fit Fishing Game donated the materials and the labor to install it, but it's owned by the town.
Right, thank you.
Yep. Adam, yes. Saw the hand up, then down, Adam. Did you have something, Adam? Jacobs? No?
Yes, sir. Thank you, though.
Okay. Am I missing any departments? I'm drawing a blank here. I think we hit them all. So I guess I'll bring this back to you, Derek.
Okay, before I get into my town administrator's report, I'll just let the board know that this week, let me see. This week, we did receive the printed versions of the voters guide, so we finalized that with the help of the school. Catherine's been sorting those out and those are going to be going to the post office shortly. And when they go to the post office, we will also post it on the website and link from our Facebook accounts. We've also been supporting staff and for these boards and committees that don't have experience using Teams yet, so we'll be working on that. I know we have two meetings this week with committees that are brand new to the Teams environment. So we'll be supporting them. And then Danielle has been doing a great job putting the final touches on the annual report. But so I'd be happy to answer any questions or I can move right into the town administrator's report.
Any questions at this point for Derek? Or if not, he'll move into his report. Okay, I don't see any hands up. Go ahead, Derek.
Okay, at tab eight A, you have your committee meeting scheduled for the next two weeks. On Wednesday at six thirty PM, the Historic District Commission is scheduled to meet remote. I still need to confirm that with the chair, but I believe that's Selectman Lemay.
Yep, can somebody cover me?
I'm sorry, I can't. I've got a conservation commission that night, Mark.
All right.
I owe you one, but I can't repay it.
No, it's all right. It's all right. Yeah.
Hey, Mark, can you cover, if you can cover Thursday, I'll cover Wednesday.
What's Thursday, Peter? What do we got?
Thursday's Planning Board, it's a real short meeting.
Sure, I'll flip flop with you.
All right, so Collis, I'm going to cover Wednesday and Mark's going to cover on Thursday.
Yep, so you got the H T C.
Okay, Derek?
That's great. Thank you very much.
And you'll send the meeting in? Do you send the meeting invites?
Yes, I will, once that is all finalized.
All right, thank you.
Conservation Commission also meets on Wednesday at seven PM.
Yeah, I have that covered.
Next week, there is an error in your packet. The Economic Development Council is actually scheduled to meet Wednesday at six PM and that'll be a remote meeting.
Yep, I'm there.
At your next page, you have your consent agenda for this week. You have employee status reports for DPW truck driver discharge, as well as a studio tech to cable TV coordinator promotion. You have a vehicle certificate of title. This is a Ford Taurus four door sedan. The reason for this is we have to transfer from the Police Department to the town of Gothstown. Town of Police Department vehicles are titled differently than all other Gothstown vehicles, so that needs a signature of the chair. And then you have event permits. Gothstown Rotary Club Car Show on June fifth from nine AM to two PM on the Lawton Parsons Drive and the garden, the gardens at Unconunic Mountain LLC. This is various dates, outdoor hosting events from mid April through October twenty twenty one, and the location is four fifty two Mountain Road.
Derek, do you know exactly how many of these events they're going to host or?
They don't have a, they don't have a set amount at this point. They, in the past, have held, whether it's bridal showers, baby showers, those type of events up there.
Do weddings and everything.
Yep.
And is there some sort of a, an arrangement for when they have to notify, I mean, is there timings on all of this? Who would don't catch any of the departments flat footed?
I can follow up with the 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 owner of that and make sure that they notify fire and police of any activity.
Great, thank you.
Question?
Yep, go ahead, Peter.
Derek, maybe you can help me with this. This is a regular business that actually nationally recognized. Why do we have to have a special event permit every time?
We do a special event permit because under the Town Special Event Ordinance, Do a special event permit because under the Town Special Event Ordinance, when there is a public event that is on a lot bordering the public way, that requires a special event permit. So it allows an opportunity for police, fire, the Health Department, various departments to double check and mention if they have any concerns and plan for those events.
Isn't this kind of cumbersome to have to do this every time for the Police Department and Fire Department? Or they just do it once for the whole year?
They do it once for the entire season.
Okay. All set, Peter?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, Derek.
If I could just get a vote on the.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Peter. Second, I heard chat. Second by chat. Any discussion on the motion? Call or roll? I vote yes, Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And chat?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes 500.
At your next page, you have assessors' recommendations. We've got quite a few. These are all recommended. You have tax abatement for fiscal year, for year 2020 town-owned property. This is map eight, lot 13B. This was a property purchased by the town in 2020, so that's the reason for this abatement. You have elderly tax deferral recommended for map six, lot 22-144, and map six, lot 65. You have elderly exemptions recommended for map 33, lot 10B, map 38, lot 85, map 16, lot 44, map 34, lot 49. You have veterans' tax credit recommended for map six, lot 22-23, map 35, lot 35-12, map six, lot 22-96, and map eight, lot 62. And then you have tax credit for service-connected total disability recommended for map nine, lot 13-12-4, and map five, lot 29-1-B.
I'll make a motion to approve the assessors' recommendations as presented.
Thank you, chat.
Second.
Second by Mark. I'm sorry. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call a roll. I vote yes, Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And chat?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes 500.
At tab eight D, you have a proposed, this would be a second amendment to the 2019 to 2023 agreement for assessing data collection between the town and Corcoran Consulting Associates. As the board may recall, last year, due to the COVID pandemic, the, this vendor or this contractor was not able to go out and measure and list properties. So in, on July 13th of 2020, we moved the 800 properties due to be measured and listed last year forward to this year. The assessor has been working with the contractor, and he has proposed that rather than do 1,600 properties this year, that we adjust the schedule to do 1,100 in 2021, 1,100 in 2022, and 1,000 in 2023. So this would still maintain the same number, same total number of parcels. It would just shift which year they would occur in.
Questions for Derek? Board members, none? Okay, Derek, what's next?
If I could just get a motion to approve that proposed second change to the agreement.
Motion there.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Peter.
I'll second.
Second by Kelly. Thank you, Kelly. Any discussion on the motion? Call or roll? I vote yes, Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And chat?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 500.
The next item, you have a memo from Danielle, Finance Director, Assistant Town Administrator, and regarding the Health Trust Wellness Coordinator Program. And I will let Danielle speak directly to that or answer any questions the board may have.
Hi, Danielle.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm with you tonight to bring some good news. The Town of Goffstown has been selected to become part of the Wellness Coordinator Program through the Health Trust. And what that means is it affords us more opportunities for training and outreach to all of our employees regarding wellness and well-being. Part of the program is that you have to attend an annual training, which we did remotely this year. The Benefits Administrator, Linda Moody, and I both attended. And the Health Trust awards each attendee with $500 for their town to utilize on wellness programs throughout the year. So tonight, I'm coming before you to ask that you accept the $1,000 from the Health Trust and authorize us to expend that under 3195B. And those funds would be in addition to any funds that are already appropriated in the town operating budget.
Thank you. Questions for Danielle from board members?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Peter.
Make a motion to accept and expend the unanticipated funds in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 31,95-B, and the amount of $1,000 from the Health Trust, and authorize the Finance Director to expend the funds in accordance with the terms of the Health Trust Wellness Coordinator Program.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Peter. And a second by chat. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call a roll. I vote yes, Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And chat?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 500.
Thank you.
At your next tab, eight F, you have a recommendation from the Planning Board to reappoint Planning Board Member Barbara Griffin as the representative to the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission with a term expiring June 24th, 2024.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Barbara Griffin as Planning Board Representative to the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission with a term expiring June 24th, 2024.
Thank you, Mark. Second by.
I'll second it.
Peter. Second by Peter. Any discussion on the motion?
I do have a question when we're done, though.
Okay, you want to, you want to ask it now before?
No, no, I agree with, I just want, I just want to find a procedural thing for positions like this, but we can do the vote first.
Yeah, okay. Any discussion before we get to the vote? Okay, I'll call a roll. I vote yes, Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
Chat?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 500. Did I forget somebody? I don't think so. Okay.
My question is, these positions like this, do we post looking for people to sign up for that? Or we just automatically put people on? And it's not just this Southern New Hampshire planning, there's another, a couple of other positions that the same thing happens with the Health Trust or something like that that represent us. Do they go out for people to apply to be that person?
So when we, Mr. Chair, if you, if I can answer. If, if we have vacancies on volunteer boards, we typically advertise those on the website. When it is a, a, whether, if it's a planning board rep to the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission in this case, we would ask for the planning board, the planning director takes that to the planning board to ask them to make that recommendation. If there are any other outside, I guess we would look to see what those requirements are. If it is a, a member of a specific board that is requested, then we would do that. Otherwise, we would most likely follow the procedure that we have for volunteer appointments. We would advertise on the website and then bring any interested people forward to the, the select board.
Well, I don't know what you just said.
I think in this, in this case, because it's a planning board rep, we left it to the planning board to make a recommendation.
Okay, but we didn't advertise it.
No, we did not advertise it.
That's fine. No, and I don't, I think Barbara's the right person for the job, don't get me wrong. But, you know, I just, if somebody else ever wanted to do it, I mean, they would, we should have a process for that.
Any other comments from board members? Peter, all set?
I'm good.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And the last item I have for you this evening is at tab eight G. You have a recommendation from the Planning Department for acceptance of a drainage easement for the condos on Mass Road. This is across from the Villa Agostina.
I'll make a motion, we accept the drainage easement. Mass Road, Crossing Condos, South Mass Route 114, map M5, lot L60 in front, across from the Villa Agostina.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Mark, seconded by Kelly. Is there any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call a roll. I vote yes, Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And chat?
Yes.
Thanks. Motion passes 500. See. Plans that go with it. Library update. I'm sorry, just going down through it. Anything else, Derek, because I think we're down to?
I think you're to select board discussion, item number 10 on your agenda.
Yeah, okay. So looking at old business, older new business?
Yes.
So one of the old business items that was brought up by one of the members of the board, Mark, do you want to speak to this?
No, I would like to retract my reconciliation and forget all about it.
Okay, fair enough. What else is on the? Let's see. What else we got on there, Derek? Review of personnel plan. I think that's ongoing, right?
Yes, on Friday. On Friday, I sent out a draft employee survey, and it would just be looking for feedback from the board members if they wanted to respond directly to me. I know at least one department head and Danielle have provided some feedback to make some improvements to that survey. But I don't know if you want to discuss that this evening or just have board members respond directly to me to bring a different version forward at a future meeting.
Yeah, why don't we go that route, Derek?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead. Yeah, Kelly, go ahead.
I do have some logistical questions regarding the survey. Derek, I don't know if you'd like me to just send those to you because I'm assuming some of them haven't been asked yet, but more so, you know, the platform, the timeframe, the response, the, if there's going to be any confidentiality surrounding, things like that. Do you want me to type them up or?
Yeah, either that or if you want to contact me sometime during the week, I'd be happy to talk to you about it. And then bring forward those answers at a future board meeting for all board members to, to hear the answers.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
That works for you, Kelly?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else? Let's see, what else have we got? We already went over the town vehicles. I think that's the extent of it. Derek, did you want to talk about the town report summary?
I did send out a draft of the select board write-up. Again, I apologize for sending it out so late. We've been quite busy and it was something that kind of fell through the, with the select board's write-up for inclusion in the annual report. We are putting the final touches on that so that we can get it to the printer. Statutorily, we have to have it available a week from tomorrow. So we are working to meet that deadline and are working with the printer with that. So we do need a pretty quick turnaround to get that to the printer either tomorrow or Wednesday at the latest.
So a drop dead date for select board members would be tomorrow?
Tomorrow, close of business, we would still be able to incorporate any, any suggestions into the final product.
Okay, great. So board members can look through that draft and direct any comments, edits, or questions to Derek before tomorrow. Close of business tomorrow, that'd be great. Thanks, Derek. I don't see anything else on the agenda.
Motion to go into non-public under RSA 91.
Oh, wait a minute, we got to do the second public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there anybody there, Derek, for a second public comment?
Yes, we do have one individual on the telephone. If you would like to make public comment to the select board, please press star nine on your telephone. When your phone is unmuted, we will, you can identify yourself and make your public comment to the board.
Good evening. Who do we have with us tonight?
Hold on. Did you want to make public comment to the board? Your phone has been unmuted.
Good evening. Who do we have with us? Someone out there wants to make public comment? Now would be your opportunity.
No, they're all set.
They're all set? Okay.
Motion to go into non-public under RSA 91-A, colon, three, to A compensation, B hiring, and C adversity affecting reputation.
Thanks, Peter.
Second.
Second by Mark to go into non-public. Do you want to call a roll on that? I vote yes, Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And chat?
Yes.
That motion passes 500. So I want to let folks know, we're watching us, following us on GTV or other media that wraps up the public portion of our meeting. We are going to go into non-public session. I want to thank you all for joining us.